We're gonna call the meeting to order. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we please have roll call?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Chakravarti.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips. Sorry, here. Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Perkins.
Here.
Councilmember McCafferty.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guneal.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here.
And our town attorney is present remotely.
All right. Introduction, presentations, and proclamations. A is a prince, presentation of proclamation issued to Joe Duffy for his outstanding years of service with the town of Chino Valley. Joe, can you come down front, please? All right. Everybody gather around. Whereas we express our appreciation to Joe Duff. Joe Duffy and honor him for his distinguished career with the town of Chino Valley and dedicated service that spans more than 11 years. And whereas Joe began his career with the town of Chino Valley on July 23rd, 2012 as finance director, was subsequently promoted to administrative service director. And whereas Joe has led the finance department through many challenges, changes, and development, always looking for ways to improve our financial position, find internal efficiencies, and enhance citizen services. And whereas, under Joe's leadership, foresight and financial acuity of the town of Chino Valley has remained fiscally. My tongue's asleep. Fisk. Sound and solvent through economic downturns and pandemics. And whereas Joe is held in the highest regard for his professionalism, unparalleled commitment to the finance well-being of the town, his steadfast public service and commitment to the community. And whereas Joe will be greatly missed and affectionately remembered, not only for his professional service, but also for his caring and unique sense of humor. I'm not gonna read the "Now I There Jack Miller Signed This Fair Go Twith." Congratulations on your retirement. This is presented to Joe Duffy from the town of Chino Valley. Thank you, Joe.
I'm gonna miss him the most.
Well, I do wanna thank mayor and council. I am sort of speechless, but this has been a fun ride. It's been a fun journey. My wife and I are looking forward to the next chapter in our life. Like I said earlier today, I don't miss the work, but I'm gonna miss the people. And Chino Valley has been really good to me. It's been a wonderful community to work in. There was not a day that I didn't look forward to coming to work. So, thank you very, very much for the opportunity.
You might as well just.
Do I need to read it? We'll have, we'll have, what's your name, Tom? Will you read the next issue? Eric, don't sit down. Did you read the next presentation?
Certainly. Going back down the floor.
No, just me and him.
Gotcha.
Unless you wanna come, you're more than welcome.
No, I'm good up here on my chair.
This will be a recognition of service as vice mayor to Eric Guneal.
Eric, it's been a pleasure having you as vice mayor. You call me every Monday morning, whether I want you to or not. And we talk a lot. And this says appreciation word presented to Eric Guneal in Superior. In sincere appreciation for your outstanding service to vice mayor. Thank you for everything. 2022, 2023.
Thank you all from the town. I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me serve you. And here's another couple months with Tom here. Thank you.
Certainly.
Okay. Item three, call to the public.
Call to the public is an opportunity for the public to address the council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda. Public comment is at the discretion of the council and not required by law. Individuals are limited to speak for three minutes. Yielding of time will not be permitted. The total time for call to the public may be up to 30 minutes per meeting. Council action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date, or responding to criticism. Disrespectful behavior will not be tolerated. This includes loud outbursts, profanity, and disruptive discussions among our audience. Mayor, I don't have any submitted cards.
Okay, nobody want? Oh, come on up.
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you very much for letting me address you. I'm Craig Brown, supervisor for District Four of Yavapai County. Wanted to update everybody a little bit on what's going on in regards to the Del Rio Springs Park project, shall we call it, and what is taking place. Because a lot of people are very concerned about what's taking place down in Phoenix in regards to funds that have been allocated to different things that are being held up by the senate and/or the house. Part of the reason for that is because they're trying to save money by not spending things, money early and having that money available in the future. However, the concern with Del Rio Springs was, is, you know, $6 million has been allocated to Del Rio Springs, and we wanna make sure that that money is received in time to make close escrow the end of next month. So, in doing so, I've contacted Senator Bennett and Senator Kavanaugh and Michael Patrick, and just let them know that we're watching what's going on. And Senator Kavanaugh told Senator Bennett, there will not be a problem with the $6 million, even though you're seeing other things being delayed and put off. So, we're getting our money. It will be spent in January to buy the property. And the 101.5 million coming from the county is on a consent agenda for August, I mean, January 2nd or 3rd. So, there's the other money. We'll buy the property and move from there.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Current event summaries and reports. Status reports by mayor and council regarding current events. Thank everybody for their well wishes and prayers. I'm on my way back, but we're doing good. Other than that, I haven't been out of my house much, so I don't have anything. How about over here? Anybody got something down here?
No, sir.
I do.
Okay.
December to Remember was awesome. Thank you to everybody that took part in all of the events. Everyone I saw or talked to or whatnot had a great time, so much, much thanks.
I guess I sat in a chair too long. Last Simpo meeting, they decided that I would be the primary representative from Simpo to the Rural Transportation Advocates Council. So, added in something else.
Cool. Town manager.
Thank you, mayor, council. Just a couple of things. So, in keeping with our December to Remember theme, our Christmas lighting, a parade of homes is ongoing. We have 52 homes that are currently registered on our website. So, if you would like to go out and enjoy that, just go to our website, chinoaz.net, and look at our recreation page. There's a list and maps, so something for everyone to enjoy during the holiday season. And also, Santa will be at our library Friday, this Friday, the 15th, from 10:00 to 11:30. So, come out and visit Santa if you'd like. We do have holiday closures. Our town offices and facilities will be closed Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st for the holidays, and we'll reopen the following Tuesday. And our senior center and library will also be closed Friday, December 22nd and Friday, December 29th, to allow staff to enjoy their time with their family. And I want to encourage everyone to shop local. Chino Valley is very lucky. We have a large variety of specialty stores and boutiques and vintage shops. They're really, they're really amazing, so I encourage you to get out and shop that and shop local. And last but not least, anyone who is interested in serving your community, our packets are now available for the open mayor and council seats. So, we encourage you to visit our website if you're interested, or contact our town clerk for more information. And that's it, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Consent agenda. Would anybody like to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove 5A.
5A?
5B.
All right, that leaves CD. Okay. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda as item 5C, D, E, F, and G.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bob, you wanna go first with 5A?
Okay. I was just wondering if we had a plan for the implementation plan? And if we are going to go after grants? If we have to ask a compact of another town to help us out in an emergency? And also, I have on page 17, contact names and numbers, and there's no phone numbers.
Mayor, council, we have.
Your mic on?
Thank you. Mayor, council, we have Deputy Chief McIntyre here to go over this item for you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just have a brief summary of kind of what the mutual aid compact is, and then I'll address your questions if I can, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here respectfully to request your support and approval in entering the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact, or AZMAC for short. You have been provided with informational documents regarding the compact, which is updated and redone every 10 years, the last being 2014. The most current agreement expires on December 31st, 2023. The new agreement will run through December 31st, 2033. The AZMAC is an agreement between several Arizona municipalities and the Department of Emergency Military Affairs to maintain critical public services under catastrophic circumstances. This, of course, is in addition to several other intergovernmental agreements, or IGAs, that we currently have with local municipalities, to include the Yavapai County Office of Emergency Management. In short, being a part of the compact will give us the ability to ask for and receive assistance directly from anyone through members of the compact. It will essentially break down any barriers or jurisdictional lines or red tape, if you will, so that the request is not delayed. It entitles all participating members to call upon each other for their support in the event of an emergency, when all other options have been exhausted. This compact will be used as a worst-case scenario. Joining the compact is a necessity for a small municipality like ours, with limited resources available to our town, and will allow us to maintain emergency services during a catastrophic event. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Do we have a town plan, or do we just go on the county plan?
So, plan-wise, it's not covered under AZMAC. So, the AZMAC essentially is a compact with several hundred municipalities within the state of Arizona. If there was a critical incident or something that happened in Chino, we'd make a phone call. They'd send who they can. So, there's really no set plan. It's almost like an agreement between jurisdictions to allow the free flow of services between jurisdictional boundaries to get whatever critical needs are needed, basically. So, no plan on how that's actually implemented. It's just, we call, they come. If they call us, and we have people available, we send people there.
Okay, then what about the phone numbers? Because I have your name down here, Frank and Paul Smith, but there's no phone numbers.
And if I can, I can help with that. I can help with that. That's restricted information, and that's why it was redacted from the public packet. It will be submitted to, with this contract, but it's just redacted for public access.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Are we currently in active good status with the AZMAC?
So, AZMAC, I did some research. We weren't listed on their last multi-agency compact. I don't know what the reasoning for that is. There were several agencies around this area that were, and just re-upped with them. So, I don't, I don't know why we weren't on that list last time, but, I mean, obviously, we, it's a good idea to be on it.
And are you the EPO or similar title, Emergency Prepartness Officer for the town of Chino? Are you it?
So, there's nobody that's directly dictated as such. We have IGAs through the Yavapai Emergency Office of Emergency Management. So, as things happen and occur here, it's kind of like a multifaceted approach with all the department heads deciding what needs to be done. Myself and Frank Marbury of Public Works would get together and decide basically what, who we need to call and what we need to go, go do.
And the last question, it's not just personnel. If you needed equipment through this AZMAC, you can get that. And there's a settled reimbursement.
Yeah, through DEMA. And basically, just a little bit more is, if, if we request assistance, most of the time through IGAs, we're not really recompensating the people helping us. It's just, we've used helicopters before and haven't had to repay anything. It's just an agreement we have, but if there is a state of emergency declared, then DEMA takes over and does all the requests for funding after that.
And since this is just about that, I won't ask you about the Yavapai IGA.
And just to give you a heads up, we got some other stuff coming with the hazard mitigation that I'm currently working on with Mr. Marbury that will be bringing to council here shortly, within the next few weeks or so.
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, nothing else on that one? Can we go ahead and vote?
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda, item 5A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. John, 5B?
Yes, and I asked for Will to do a presentation, because there's a lot of moving parts to this request that weren't necessarily elaborated on in the staff report.
Correct. Alrighty. Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of council. Will Denji, your assistant director here with Development Services. The item before you is a request from staff for the formation of two committees. So, I apologize if that was not clear in the staff report. It's two separate committees. The zoning code committee, excuse me, and the solar energy committee. This is a request by staff to form these purely advisory committees to staff, not to council or to planning commission, purely to staff, in order to form these and actually begin with the recruitment process. And hopefully by, before the holidays, we can start sending out some social media invitations, looking for volunteers to serve in some form of capacity on these committees. This is the first of many, many items that staff will be bringing before council in relation to that Make It Chino 2040 general plan and its subsequent implementation. So, this is our first one right off the bat here, and it's asking for your approval for these committees. Now, the intention of these committees is to just get those volunteers coming in. So, there really wasn't a plan to go into that nitty-gritty detail of what they're actually gonna be deciding and discussing. However, I did pull a couple exhibits out from the 2040 plan to give some framework for tonight's discussion. So, the first committee, the zoning code committee. While there are numerous policies within the 2040 plan that call for some level of remediation or adjustment to the town zoning code, or known as the Unified Development Ordinance, staff is kicking it, or proposing to kick it off with the section or found in element 3, page 18 of your general plan, known as land use. And the intent of this goal is to update the Unified Development Ordinance to align with the future land use map and the general plan. There are four policies within there, specific to developing some architectural design guidelines to ensure Chino's rural character is maintained, to ensure that any obsolete zoning districts are removed from code, and then updating our current ones, or even creating new ones to reflect the 2040 general plan, evaluating and amending the planned area development district to support that horizontal multi-use areas, those six that we have within that future land use map. And then ultimately, updating the Unified Development Ordinance for compliance with new laws, case law, and federal requirements. The second group is the solar energy committee, which is intended to create a recommendation that kind of guides how, if solar, large-scale utility solar projects are brought here into Chino Valley. This is found within element 6, page 22, and it's known as the resiliency section. And its purpose is to enhance the town resiliency by seeking redundant sources of power to support stable, regional, and community-serving utilities, systems, and minimize service disruptions. Now, there are six policies within there, with number 3 being the one that dictates establishing a committee to help develop guidelines and regulations for these facilities, which include performance standards, setbacks, looking at how big these projects can be, potential tax revenues, or tax avenues, excuse me, visual impact mitigation and setbacks, wildlife migration, items like that. And it goes into a lot more broader detail. Staff purposefully omitted the composition of this group, because we're really not sure what the volunteers, or what we're gonna get for volunteers on this. Ideally, staff is hoping for at least three members of the public, one planning commission member, and then some sort of environmental specialist. In addition to that, this committee will receive presentations or some form of study session with representative of CAFMA, a representative from APS, and then a representative from established solar developers. That way, we're hopefully removing special interests as best as we can, but they're ensuring that they are still receiving the best education they can to ensure that they're vetting this information along with staff. So, with that, staff does recommend that council approve the formation of the two committees, that solar energy and the zoning code committees, and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
We spoke yesterday, and as you know, I was really hesitant to get on board with this green agenda that's being forced down our throats by the federal government. But we do need to come around. I understand I have to embrace it. So, the UDO side, no issues. You and Lori have, I have all the confidence in the world you'll get that. On the solar, though, I started researching. There's a bunch of issues out there that we need to address.
There absolutely is.
You know, so some of the areas that I wanna make sure that this committee, whether it's volunteer committees, or staff, or somebody, address. Is it like the scale? Are we gonna go utility, commercial, residential scale? That makes a big difference. The aesthetics, obviously, if we're gonna require screening, because I have some issues with the marijuana farm, you couldn't screen a skateboard, you know, with what they've been having there. Noise emissions, inverters, and stuff like that. Heat island effects, I wanna make sure that the committee addresses the potential environmental heat island effects. Soil erosions, you mentioned that. Water demands. They say it's not really water-dependent, but yet there's wells going towns up and down in California, the Mecca of solar, that are going dry. And that's having an adverse impact on land values in those immediate areas. Setbacks, you mentioned that. Reclamations. The most important, though, is the fire suppression. As you all know, we had that April of 2019. We had thermal runaway fires, the cascading thermal runaway fires, that injured eight firemen. And McMickman After Action Report by APS is a good guide that we should at least review, or this committee should review, to see about the preventive measures to prevent that thermal runaway firing. Because traditional suppressants don't work on these. Some of the things we should consider is if we're gonna allow battery packages. Are we gonna allow lithium ion or only zinc? If we allow lithium ion, there's a fire. I talked to three firemen, or my soccer dad, and they told me the only way to do it is to smother it completely under like four feet of dirt. So, are we gonna require buildup of dirt at large piles, so you don't go steal it from your neighbor's land to put out a fire? I mean, I don't know the answers. I'm just throwing out the questions. I would ask whoever you choose for this side of the committee, that they be critical thinkers. They would be willing to do the research and read. There's a lot of data. But you have to go to page 8, 9, and 10 in Google before you get away from the solar industry-sponsored data, which is really important, because there's a lot of mixed information out there.
Absolutely.
No, I don't have a problem with this, but I also think NFPA should be keeping up with the speed with all the issues related to fire, because right now, California, Ohio, New York had three fires last year that were very damaging. San Diego just had fires. Now, all these governors are saying, whoa, we need to put the brakes on and start thinking more about our fire mitigation, especially with the batteries, the panels themselves. But there's a lot of heavy metals in those, and they do burn. And when they do, they go into the soil. What's, what's gonna be the mediation plan for that? So, though, I just wanna make sure we're doing a 360 assessment. And that McMickman, McMickman APS Technical After Action Report is a good template to use to ask questions, to make sure we're guiding our new policies toward that. Because they lived through eight injured firefighters who were never returning to work again. That's all I have.
Anybody else on this? Okay, we're all done?
I think so. And you, and we spoke, and you agree that that stuff. That's what I wanna make sure we pursue. I don't want a homogenous group that all just wants to get there to get it done.
No, we don't want that either.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion on 5B.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda, item 5B.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to action items. Consideration possible action to nominate and elect council member to serve as vice mayor. Excuse me, I would like to nominate Tom Armstrong to fill that seat for the next year.
May I make a motion?
You sure can.
Which one?
I don't know. I don't know. I need the paper. It's okay. I make a motion that we follow Mayor Miller's nomination and elect Tom Armstrong to serve as vice mayor for the town of Chino Valley.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
You do have a vote, so let's make sure we hear your vote. Thank you.
Item 6B, consideration possible action to adopt resolution 2023, 1, 2, 3, 5. Presentation from staff.
Nope.
Yep, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Jackson. I am the town's longtime water and wastewater rate consultant. And I'm here to give a, hopefully, brief presentation tonight as a follow-up on the rate study that we recently completed for the town. As you know, we were engaged by the town earlier this year to do a new comprehensive water and wastewater financial analysis and recommended long-term rate plan. Under Arizona statutes, once a town decides to move forward with adopting a new rate plan, you have to follow a certain set of guidelines. You have to adopt a notice of intent, which the town did 60 days ago. 60 days after that notice of intent, you have to hold a formal public hearing. And that is the purpose of tonight's presentation, to be the public hearing on the water and wastewater rate plan. I will briefly go over the results of the study itself once again. And then, the, then the meeting should be opened up for any comment from the public with regards to which long-term rate plan they would prefer to be implemented. After the closing of the public hearing, the town council is then, under, again, under Arizona statutes, is then enabled to adopt the rate plan of its preference. Whatever rate plan is adopted would go into effect 30 days after the date of the vote. So, like I said, tonight is the, is the public hearing, and we're going to very briefly go over some of the results of the, of the rate study. I wanna start by talking a little bit about the history of water and wastewater rates here in the town. In 2013, the town did a comprehensive five-year rate plan and adopted and implemented it. Whereas with any rate plan, Whereas with any rate plan, when it is adopted for a period of time, it's always good after a couple of years to go back and see where you are as opposed to where you thought you would be. And the good news for the town is that the town experienced a little bit more growth and its expenses didn't come in as projected. So all of the years of the rate plan did not have to end up being adopted. And the wastewater rates were suspended in two thousand and fifteen. In two thousand and eighteen, the town actually began lowering its wastewater rates, which I can tell you as a person who's done this for over forty cities in the state of Arizona, that doesn't happen very often. You don't have many communities that have actually been able to lower their wastewater rates, but the town was able to do that. People pay less today for wastewater service than they did ten years ago. You lowered rates in two thousand and nineteen and then you lowered rates again in two thousand and twenty-one. I think that was a good idea. It was prudent and it was beneficial to, to the town. So what are the current rates right now? Town, on the water side, the town charges a combination of a minimum charge and a monthly volumetric rate. For most customers, that minimum charge is six dollars and fifty cents per month. After that, you pay a rate per thousand gallons. That rate increases the more water you use. The idea of this is it's called an inverted block rate. It is intended to encourage conservation by providing a price disincentive for people using greater amounts of water. On the wastewater side, residential customers pay a flat fee of fifty-eight dollars a month. Commercial customers pay a flat fee and a volumetric rate. Now, a common question that is asked among ratepayers and councils is, how do our rates compare to other rates charged by other communities in Arizona? It's not always a fair question because rates are going to differ for every community. The rate decision is dependent on a lot of factors, like for example, how much money does a town want to put into maintaining its system? Some cities spend very lavishly on upgrading and maintaining its systems. Other cities don't spend hardly any money at all on it. I work for some cities that have extraordinarily low rates, but they have low rates because they're not putting any money into maintaining their system. It's sort of like saying, I can save a hundred dollars by not changing the oil in my car. Well, you can do that, but a year later, the engine's going to blow out. So sometimes it's a good idea to, to invest in your system to ensure that you have a high quality level of service. Now that being said, this chart right here compares what people in the town of Chino Valley pay for water and wastewater service on a monthly basis with other neighboring communities. The average customer here in Chino Valley uses about five thousand gallons of water and wastewater service a month. Now that's an average. Some people use more, some people use less. But about sixty to seventy percent of monthly bills are going to be five thousand gallons or less. If you're a five thousand gallon user here in the town, you pay ninety-one dollars a month for that service. Now that doesn't include garbage or taxes or other factors that go on a monthly bill. It's just your basic water and wastewater rates. As you can see, you compare pretty favorably to most of your neighbors. You're about in the middle. You're a little higher than some, like Prescott Valley and Camp Verde and Cottonwood. And you're a little less, like some communities like Prescott, Sedona and Clarkdale. You're a little bit above the state average. I can also tell you that virtually every one of these communities is going to be raising their rates in the, in the immediate future. I know that because I work for a lot of these communities. But they are faced with the same challenges you are. Costs are going up. You're trying to run your operation like a business. And, and all you're asking your ratepayers to do is pay what it is costing you to provide that service. So as your costs go up, all you're doing is passing it through to your ultimate ratepayer. I want to emphasize this very strongly. You don't make a profit on your water and wastewater operation. All you're trying to do is cover your costs. So just a couple of brief charts. You've got about, you've got about a thousand eighty-nine water customers right now. We're anticipating it's going to grow nominally over the next ten years, about fifty, maybe sixty new accounts per year. And that's fully factored into the long-term rate plan. Consumption wise, you sold about a hundred and eighteen million gallons of water this past year. Now, obviously, as you continue to increase accounts, you're going to increase your water usage a little bit. You're anticipating going up to about a hundred and forty-four million gallons by the year two thousand and thirty-three. Okay, so how are costs going to change in the coming years? I once again really want to emphasize the fact that you try to run your water operation like a business. You want the revenues from your rates to cover all the costs of providing that service. And when costs go up, you have to pass that through to your customers. Well, guess what? Like any business, you're subject to inflation. Cost of everything goes up three to four percent a year. And so any long-term rate plan has to factor in the fact that that there is going to be inflation and that costs are going to go up over the time period. Now, certain costs in a water and wastewater operation go up at rates higher than inflation. Chemicals, electricity, insurance, workers' compensation. All of those factors go into the provision of water and wastewater service. And again, as they go up, that is going to be ultimately reflected in your rates. But the most important factor that goes into this long-term rate plan is the capital improvements that are going to be needed to maintain your system and to ensure that your system continues to operate at a high level. Look, it costs millions of dollars to build a water system, to lay all those pipes in the ground, to build those pump stations, to push that water through the town, to ensure that at any time of the day or night, if somebody wants to get up and if somebody wants to get up at three o'clock in the morning and go get a drink of water, water is going to be there for them. Costs a lot of money to build a system like that. And like any system, it wears out over time. And so the challenge you have as a community is that you want to keep your rates as low as possible, but you also want to provide a level of service that is what your citizens expect of you. And so while you want to keep those rates low, you have to balance that with the need to invest in your system. And according to your staff and engineers, you're going to have to invest as much as eighteen point eight million dollars over the next decade in capital improvements to ensure the proper functioning of your system. Okay, well, to no great surprise, you don't have eighteen million dollars in the bank right now, so you're going to have to go out and borrow a certain amount of it. And so as you borrow that money, you have to set rates in place that are going to enable you to repay the debt. Now, capital improvement plans impact rates in three ways. How much do you have to spend? When do you have to spend it? And how do you finance it? This chart right here shows that over the next ten years, your forecast to issue about twelve point eight million dollars in bonds. So you don't have to fund all eighteen million with debt. You can, you've got some ongoing cash and rates that will fund the rest of it. But also importantly, in the next two years, you're looking at funding about eight point two million of it. So, so two-thirds of your debt funding has to come in the next two years. That means that you have to adjust your rates more aggressively in the next couple of years in order to ensure that you can start repaying that debt in a, in a way that meets your bond covenants. So that is a critical factor in the rate plan. These two charts here show what everybody knows is going to happen. This is a forecast of your water cost of service over the next ten years. And the bar chart is broken into four elements. The blue portion of every bar is your operating costs. As you can see, they kind of trend up every year as you'd expect. The red portion is transfers, transfers to the general fund, which is a common element of the cost of service. It reimburses the general fund for supporting the water and wastewater utility. But the important one is the green section. That's your debt service. So that shows the impact of issuing this new debt. As you can see, it causes your costs to go up pretty significantly over the next ten years. And so that's how we're funding the long-term, that's how, that's how we're designing the long-term rate plan. So I'm going to present to you two potential rate plan scenarios. I often like to say that rate making is as much an art as it is a science. You can, you can design a hundred different rate plans that'll get you the revenues that you need to run your system. The key is, what is, what rate plan do you consider to be the most fair, just and reasonable rate plan for your citizens? Different rate plans are going to impact different people differently. I use the word different three times in that sentence, but that is the case. Also, you sometimes use rate plans to try to achieve certain goals like conservation. Conservation is a key goal. You know, there's not going to be enough water to go around over the next hundred years. So we need to ensure that conservation is going to be a key element of any long-term rate plan. We have a certain gentleman in the audience here that might be able to speak to that in more detail. Mr. Mark Holmes there. Feel free to jump in anytime you want, okay? No, 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 no. So, so we're going to recommend the implementation of a three-year rate plan with rate adjustments effective in January of two thousand and twenty-four, January two thousand and twenty-five and January two thousand and twenty-six. In this initial proposal, it assumes no basic change in the rate structure. It's just percentage increases each years for your base and your usage charges. I'm going to first show you the rates themselves, then I'll show you the more important chart, and that is the impact on a monthly bill. This chart right here shows the projected rates for the next three years under this, what I call the status quo scenario. Assuming that you like the rate plan the way it is, you don't want to make any significant changes to how you, how you structure your rates. As you can see, your minimum charge goes up a little bit every year. Your three-quarter inch base charge goes from six dollars and fifty cents to six seventy. And then by twenty cents a year each, for each in the next couple of years. Your volumetric rate goes up. The only real change is that we also recommend implementing what we call a water resource fee, which is a two dollar a month charge that is going to help you develop more funds to devote towards water resources in the future years, because that's going to become an increasingly important expenditure for the town. On the wastewater side, we can see increasing the residential base charge by about a dollar and a half to two dollars a month each year. So what does this mean? Well, this chart right here shows the impact on a residential rate payer at various gallon levels. Remember, the average rate payer uses about five thousand gallons a month. Average rate payer has twelve bills a year. So what that means is the majority of those bills are going to be five thousand gallons or less. Now, of course, you've got some larger users, obviously you do, but the vast majority of your customers use only about four to five thousand gallons a month. So if you're a five thousand gallon user, right now you pay ninety-one dollars a month for service. Under this plan, your bill would go up by about four dollars and seventy-three cents a month in the first year. That's five point two percent increase, for those that want to look at this in terms of percentages. In the next two years, it only goes up by three percent, about two and a half to three dollars a month. Four thousand gallon users, the bill's a little bit less. Obviously, if you use more water, ten thousand gallons or twenty thousand gallons, the increase would be higher. Now, I hate to take these very complex financial and rate plans and try to summarize it in terms of one or two numbers. I don't like to do that, but if I did, I would tell you that for the vast majority of ratepayers, this plan would be about a four to five dollar a month increase in the first year and about a two to three dollar a month increase in year two and year three. Okay, that's the first scenario. Now, let's talk about maybe it's alternative scenario. And that scenario would be a more aggressive conservation scenario. The idea is, as I said earlier, that we want to try to encourage conservation. We want to ensure that people have the water they need, but that there is a financial disincentive for doing that. Right now, you have three conservation blocks. Zero to eight thousand gallons, eight thousand to twenty thousand gallons and twenty thousand gallons and above. Well, well, that's, this is your current plan right here. Whoops. I'm going the wrong way. Sorry, sorry about this. I'm having. See, this is the current plan. The current plan, your volume charge goes from zero to eight thousand, eight to twenty and twenty and above. There's an alternative rate plan that would, instead of going from eight to twenty thousand gallons, it would go from eight to fifteen thousand gallons.
That's what's on the second page.
Whoops. All right, I did it again. So instead of having three blocks, you would have four blocks. Zero to eight, eight to fifteen, fifteen to twenty and twenty and above. The idea would be that it would offer a greater incentive earlier in usage amounts. You see, there's not much point in doing a conservation block for five thousand gallons or even ten thousand gallons because that is water usage that we consider to be non-discretionary. You know, if a family is using only five to ten thousand gallons of water a month, that's generally water that's used inside the house for bathing or for drinking and for washing dishes. Once a residential customer gets beyond ten to fifteen thousand gallons, they're starting to use what we call discretionary water, outdoor water usage, lawn watering, car washing, that kind of thing. Because a typical family doesn't need more than ten to fifteen thousand gallons a month. Because if you're a family of four and you're using ten thousand gallons, that's, that's somewhere around a hundred to a hundred and fifty gallons a day per person. You know, so that's, you know, three hundred gallons a day per family, nine thousand gallons a month. That's a lot of water usage. So if you're using fifteen to twenty thousand gallons, that's water that you're using outside. So you add an additional incentive here for people to limit that outdoor usage by providing a higher financial disincentive for people using greater amounts. So under this plan, as you can see, the base charges wouldn't change and the wastewater rates wouldn't change, but you would have four blocks instead of three. Five dollars and forty-six for the first volume, six eighty-three for the second volume, eight fifty-four for fifteen to twenty thousand, and then eleven dollars and ten cents for above twenty thousand gallons. Now, what would the impact of this be? Well, there wouldn't be a significant change for your low, for your low-volume users. In fact, that there wouldn't be any change at all. But once you get above ten thousand gallons, under this alternative, as you can see, if you're a twenty thousand gallon user, your increase would be about eight percent in the first year because you've added that additional block and you have provided that additional disincentive. The water is still there for them to use, but this is going to make people think twice about excessive outdoor water usage. And that's the whole idea of conservation. It's more aggressive, but it is intended to get people to use this precious and diminishing resource in a way that is not only prudent for themselves, but prudent for the community as well. So like I said, rate making is an art, not a science. You know, scenario two gives you a greater incentive to conserve water than scenario one does. Both scenarios will get you approximately the same amount of revenue. It's just a matter of what goals do you want to achieve from this plan? So you'll be happy to know I'm to my last slide right now. I just want to summarize this by saying that, that these are obviously very difficult decisions you make. They're not just financial decisions, they're social and community decisions as well. The town has done an extraordinary job over the last decade in keeping its water and sewer system financially healthy through very challenging times. It's required you to make some very tough decisions in the past. I've been working for you for a long time. I admire the fact that the town has been willing to do something that they don't want to do, raise rates. But you've done, but you have achieved your goals. You have a healthy utility, you have a well-functioning utility. And this rate plan, whichever one you choose, will enable you to continue that into the future. We strongly recommend that you, that you adopt at least one of these two plans tonight. With that, I'd be happy to answer your questions you have at this time.
Any questions on this thing?
So you said there was eleven hundred people that buy water from the town of Chino?
That's, that's about right, yes.
How many wells are there?
I don't, I honestly don't know.
Okay, so the wastewater and the water is one rate. If you buy the water from Chino and you, of course, have the wastewater in Chino. I have Prescott water. What does that do with me?
Well, your wastewater charge is the same.
Right, that's not going to go up.
It's a, your wastewater charge is a fixed monthly charge of fifty-eight dollars right now. You, that's how much you pay and that will go up.
My water usage has nothing to do with these rates that you're talking about.
That's correct. You, as a Prescott water user, would only see a wastewater increase under this plan.
And I'm the only one on this council that has water and waste.
I've got water and waste. I just don't have it the way you do.
You have both.
You have septic and you have a well.
No? On the debt taken out, is that just to service the existing lines or is that to add? I think that might be a question for Frank, but on the debt that you're going to take out, is that just to service the existing system?
Can we talk? I'm not an engineer. I don't know precisely what the funds are going to be used for. I know it's a combination of overhauling existing lines, expanding the lines and putting in, you know, rehabbing your pump stations and your lift stations. Thanks.
How about over here?
I just, I have one for Ms. Blackmore, I think, because Joe's not here, right? So I think it was at the last meeting or the meeting before that, did he not mention that we were five hundred K in deficit on the wastewater side because of no new hookups?
Well, yes, the, the fund is, is operating in the red right now, but these rates will correct that.
And that's my question is, are these rates calculated to make that go to zero?
Yes, and, and it'll actually be a little bit above that. There'll be a bit of a contingency balance as well. There'll be a bit of a contingency balance as well.
And I know I'm not going to hold you to this, but how far into the, how many calendar years are we looking that it would zero out?
It would be-
Based on existing use.
We're, we're projecting that for the next three years, you will recover your costs each year.
The last question I have is, this two dollar resource tax you made reference to?
Right.
Okay, so if we're, and we're looking at the next ten years going up to fifteen hundred users
Mm-hmm.
um, a year, that's only generating thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Uh, yeah, but we're going to depend on thirty-six thousand dollars a year for what? You can't even get paper clips for that much anymore.
Well, I mean, I, I understand that it's probably not as much as you would like it to be, but the problem is to generate more revenue from that resource fee, you'd have to make it higher. And, um, and so sometimes it's better to ease into that. Maybe at some point in the future, as you add more accounts, you might want to go back and revisit that fee. You know, what, what should the amount be, particularly as water resources become more expensive in the next decade?
And I don't dispute it, I just wonder if we need it at this time. We do the rate increases everywhere else, we just don't do the resource fee because it's really so de minimis. It's not going to really, really make a dent into anything we're looking to do when everything, even a study costs-
But John, isn't that a piece of the pie?
Well, if it's-
It's a slice of the whole pie.
If it's, and it could be, if it's collective, if we put it in the bank and we leave it there to aggregate bill. But if we're just putting it and spending it, it's just- I'm just, I'm just asking the question, I'm not saying I'm really that eager to do away with it, I'm just asking the question. If it's so de minimis because it's only thirty-six thousand dollars a year in the next ten years,
Mm-hmm.
how much are we really adding value by taxing everybody two dollars?
Well, if you don't change the fee at all, you'd probably accumulate between five and six hundred thousand dollars over the next decade. Because it's-
I'm not saying all the fees, I'm just saying the resource fee.
Mm-hmm, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Because, remember, it's thirty-six thousand dollars this year, but as you grow accounts, you will grow the fee. Um, you could also, if, if you, if you want that resource fee to generate more revenue, you could consider adjusting the fee at some point in the future. Um, um, it's totally up to you to decide how to do that. What this does is, this, this is something that helps. It's not going to solve all your problems, but it is a step in the right direction. Many cities are starting to do this, they're starting to have these separate monthly fees. Because one of the, one of the benefits it does is it, it's a, it's a, it's a signal to rate payers that water resources are going to be a separate and increasing cost in the next decade. And, and yes, it's two dollars today, it might have to be more than that in the future. Trends indicate that that may very well be the case.
And, and that's, that's maintained and balanced as a separate line item that carries over year to year?
Mayor, Councilmember McCaffrey, yes, it is.
Okay, alright, that's all I have, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Anything else on this side?
Nope.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to declare a public hearing open. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comments? Seeing none, we're going to-
Wait a minute, I got one.
I'm sorry, come on up. Hello. Hello, please state your name.
Uh, TJ Brown.
Thank you.
I, I didn't know what was happening tonight and didn't plan on making any comment, but I just had to comment on this. So, it seemed like the first portion of that presentation, the first billing scenario, or the first portion of the presentation was talking about, uh, practical, functional, business operating, covering expenses, and developing a system to, uh, cover those costs. And then the second portion of it focused on conservation and financial penalty to high-volume users, which, if successful, would generate less revenue because the high-volume users would change their behavior, and then there wouldn't be enough revenue to cover the debt service. So, I'm curious about that for one. And then the other scenario is, or the other concern, you know, we all look at the national debt and kind of scoff at it, that the national debt just keeps going up, 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 up. And looking at the chart there, that looks like twelve and a half million in new debt. And I got to think that it's actually not that big of a number. And is there some other way to do it that's not debt? Uh, there was some discussion about, uh, future connection fees and development and adding more users to the system. Um, I happen to know of hundreds of units that would like to be developed. And it seems to me that maybe that route might be better to have development go through and have connection fees and add users to the system versus strapping the whole community with twelve million dollars in new debt. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think Mark wants to come up.
Oh, no.
Come on, Mark.
Aw, it's Annie.
He's, he's back there sitting on his fingers.
I'm not, I'll keep it real short. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh-
Twenty-eight slides.
Yeah, your presentation.
Zero slides. Um, again, just want to remind you, this, uh, this rate study was part of United States Bureau of Reclamation grant that funded the, the additional work to look at that conservation. One of the main points, a great question by the public, um, we looked at, we have January to December, we see a bell curve of water usage. Fifty to sixty percent of it is used outdoors in Chino Valley for our small number of customers. Most communities down the valley and others have sixty to seventy percent. So, fifty to sixty percent is a big portion. We're trying to lower that bell curve from the summer water usage. If it was flatlined, we'd have a single rate that was every month the same, that'd be idealistic. But we do have a variable water usage throughout the year. We've looked at how much water would be saved and left in the aquifer, and that was one of the main points. It is a balancing between how much water you consume, how much water you sell, and balancing the financials as, uh, Mr. Jackson stated. We just wanted to bring that point up, it was a grant that funded this additional, and again, I'd recommend that second additional tier. Um, that is something I think is important to try and lower that bell curve and save a little water in the aquifer. We're trying to make this very limited water resource last longer for our future generations. And by doing this every year going forward, we will lower that bell curve. And it will be financially a disincentive for, uh, the high-water use customers. And they will find more efficiencies such as car washes that recycle and recirculate water and so forth. And, um, regarding this, the water service fee, real quick, um, that is, it is small at first, but it will grow, but it pays for, water resources isn't just wells, pipes, pumps, and tanks. It's groundwater modeling, it's studies that require hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've just completed two of them, a physical availability determination for our town's water service area, and then looking at mitigating the water we may pump in the future from the big Chino and where it would make sense to recharge reclaimed water and looking at those areas that would sustain the aquifer and potentially sustaining the Upper Verde River. So, those studies are expensive, so water management is both modeling, it's resource management, and it's the infrastructure and capital expenses. Just want to point out a couple of those things, um, just to add some additional details, that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Um, we have two options, so. I don't know what council's pleasure is.
I was going to say, should we just do an unofficial straw poll just to see where we are, whether we want to pursue option one or option two?
Is that legal?
You can have a discussion amongst the council.
Okay.
Is that what you're looking for?
Can we go backwards on the-
Can we pull the slide back up, please, the options?
This is option one. Um, and this is option two. There's no change in the minimum charges, no change in the wastewater charges. The only change is right here in the volumetric rate. And the impact, there's a lot of numbers here, but the bottom line is that high-volume water users would pay more under option two than they would under option one. And that is by design to get people to conserve water usage.
Option two favors conservation of water in the long run.
But like the comment that TJ made, um, if we do have that conservation swing, swing, then we're not going to have the funds.
Hey, well, the water business is a funny business. You're in the business of producing a product that you're trying to get your customers not to buy. That's, and so, when you design a conservation rate, you have to take into consideration the fact that people are likely going to use less water. It's called an elasticity factor, and we actually put that in our models. So we're assuming people are going to use less water under scenario two. Now, look, it's a, uh, it's an educated guess, I mean, you never know how people are really going to react. But we are assuming that people will use less water under option two, that's why the rate's higher.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we have more users of sewer than we do of our municipal water, isn't that, is that correct?
Yes.
Is it substantially different?
Mayor, council, I don't have the number, but I think it's double.
Yeah, because half the people are in Chino, Chino, Prescott Water and Chino Meadows.
There's a thousand eighty-nine water customers and there's twenty-four hundred and thirty-one wastewater customers, so it's more than double.
Alright, Bob?
That's pretty substantial.
One or two?
One.
Annie?
Eric?
Two.
Jerry?
Two.
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 And I'm leaning towards two as well, so.
We have to err on the side of conservation, we're going to run out of water anyway, we've got to.
No, we've got a hundred years.
Can you bring up two again for Annie? Thank you. Oh, that's, there it is. Okay. Motion, please. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would make a reservation to approve resolution two zero two three dash one two three five, increasing waste and wastewater rates by three percentage year for three years, establishing a water resource fee and adding a fee for volume charges.
That was number one, wasn't it?
That's two.
That's two.
And can I confirm that that's a motion, not your reservation, correct?
It's a motion.
Okay, thank you.
You said reservation.
You said reservation, but-
Well, I lived on a reservation.
He was feeling a little hesitant.
Motion's made in second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, thanks again for, uh, for having me here.
Yes, sir. Item C, consideration and possible action regarding application for new series double oh seven liquor license from Pizza Hut.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, Sarah Virchell, Deputy Town Clerk. Uh, applicant Teresa Morris has applied with the state for a series seven beer and wine bar liquor license for Pizza Hut located at three one two Marketplace Drive, Chino Valley. Uh, Ms. Morris was supposed to be on Zoom, but I don't see her. So hopefully I can answer any questions you might have. Um, now you might be thinking to yourself, doesn't Pizza Hut already have a liquor license? And yes, they do. They currently hold a series twelve restaurant liquor license, which allows onsite sale and consumption of spirituous liquor with no to-go privileges. The State Liquor Board allows stacking of these licenses to allow patrons to purchase new unopened beer and wine as a to-go option. Spirituous liquor will not have an option for to-go orders. The police, fire, and planning departments have reviewed the application and recommended approval with no comments. Staff posted the establishment with the necessary notices to meet the required twenty-day period from November twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three to December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. To date, staff has not received any written arguments in favor or in opposition to this requested liquor license. Upon reviewing the matter provided by the Department of Liquor License and Control and conducting a public hearing, the council may recommend to the State Liquor Board to grant or deny the license or vote to make no recommendation. Ultimately, the State Liquor Board will make the final decision regarding issuance of the license. The Arizona Department of Liquor website currently lists twenty-two active liquor licenses within Chino Valley town limits. However, two of those are for Safeway, and they do not appear to have included Circle K's latest, uh, license application. There is only one other establishment in town with a series seven liquor license. Eight other establishments hold a series twelve restaurant liquor license. And that's all I have for you, if you have any questions. Yes.
Okay, questions on this side for staff?
Nope.
Over here?
I have questions. So is that, um, it says on or off the premises? So the delivery pizza guy can take alcohol with his pizza delivery to a home?
I do not recall seeing anything about that.
I didn't read anything either.
So I can't say yes or no.
But it's on or off.
I believe, um, it is just from the establishment that they can remove it from. I don't believe a delivery driver can carry. I, I, if I remember-
But do we know that?
If I remember correctly, I think I remember seeing something about carryout, specifically carryout, not delivery.
Says delivery here.
Oh. On the application?
Okay. My mistake, it does not say delivery, but it says on or off premises. To go.
Yes.
We don't, because when you order a pizza, you can also now order alcohol to be delivered with that pizza. That's what I'm reading.
I, I don't have a specific answer to that one.
Company too.
Yeah, I believe, um, there was a temporary law that was in place during the COVID time that allowed for that.
During the COVID.
Right, I believe that that has been suspended. This is now just for removing unopened, and it's beer and wine, correct? Beer and wine. Only from the establishment.
You know, I know that, uh, you know, Safeway delivers alcohol with their food deliveries. I know we're not talking about Safeway. But if you have a delivery person for Pizza Hut, and it, it's not spelled out here, whether it is for home delivery, carryout, the pizza delivery guy is carrying it out of the store.
I will say, Safeway has different licenses.
No, no, we're not talking, I'm just saying that-
Right.
They do deliver alcohol with the food. So that's a concern here. And then, um, the title for training, do they have all that done?
Well, the-
I was concerned about the guy delivering the pizza. So if we don't know-
The establishment, as far as I know, is in good standing. And I looked for any violations for this particular establishment, and I did not find any.
Okay. I have the application here that's signed by the manager of this, and he didn't complete the application. He didn't complete number sixteen.
Okay, that, that would be something that the Liquor Board would look at. What-
But it got this far without somebody catching it? That's page one seventeen.
Page what?
Page one seventeen of our stuff. Number sixteen has an entity in which you are or have been a controlling person, had an application or license rejected, denied, revoked, suspended in or outside of Arizona within the last five years, if it's not marked. And this is a legal document.
Um, thank you, Councilmember, I, uh, see that here. And so these applications do start with the Liquor Board. They review them for completeness, and once they've okayed that, then they do forward it to the town. So my guess is they've already, um, allowed for that one not to be answered. I will let you know here that, uh, statute was pulled, and it does allow for the delivery. So this retail license also has limited off-sale or to-go privileges. Liquor may be delivered off of the licensed premises in connection with a retail sale, so it will allow it.
Okay, and, uh, what's the age of the delivery people, do we know?
No, I, I don't. I mean, I, I would, I would assume it's twenty-one, just like someone from Safeway can't ring me up for alcohol. Oh, nineteen, oh, okay.
We, we can submit this to the state with no recommendation, right? Just pass it on up the hill?
I would be comfortable with that.
And let them make the decision, if we've got too many questions to answer right here, let the state make the decision, they're the final approval anyway.
That's, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Makes sense to me.
Alright, thank you, Sarah.
Sure.
What? Okay, we're going to declare an open public hearing, is there anybody have any comment on this? Okay, we're gonna declare an open public hearing, is anybody have any comment on this?
I did not receive any cards on this item.
Okay. I'm looking, nobody stood, okay, we're gonna, oh, close a public hearing, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we submit the application from Teresa Morris Hot Pizzas LLC, AKA Pizza Hut, for a new series zero zero seven beer and wine bar liquor located at three twelve Marketplace Drive, Chino Valley, for state decision, no decision from the town.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded, are you all in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
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 Where adjourn? My tongue, my tongue ain't working.
Working tonight.
Yeah, it's in the minutes.
All they're gonna do is drive around the corner to the liquor store and get what they want anyway.
What difference does it make? Better than they're not driving down there drunk. I don't see what the big deal is. That is against any alcohol anywhere.
The delivery person that comes to my house.
There's Family Dollar and Liquor Barn are right next.
Next door, yeah.
Thank you.
The, the delivery person from Pizza Hut that comes to my house is drawn on social security.
Yeah.
Yeah.